Ready down there? The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be led by Alton Blakely, pastor of Mount Olive Baptist Church.
Let us pray. John God our Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus Christ, heavenly Father, lifting up this council meeting to you, heavenly Father. We thank you for these men and women, heavenly Father, who are serving, heavenly Father, to make Dennison even a greater place, heavenly Father, in which individuals are able to come to live. We thank you for the knowledge and the wisdom that you've given them, heavenly Father. We thank you for the inspiration that they give others, heavenly Father, in wanting to also achieve leadership, heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, heavenly Father, as we prepare to engage in this meeting, heavenly Father, we ask in the name of Jesus Christ that you give them the knowledge and wisdom, heavenly Father, to continue to rightly lead us, heavenly Father, in the path in which we need to go, heavenly Father, in order to make this one of the greatest cities, heavenly Father, in the United States. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ and for your sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Will you join us with the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to lead Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. At this time in every meeting, we set aside a time for any citizen to speak on behalf of any agenda item, any action item that is listed on the agenda. Ms. Wallantine, do we have any request to speak cards?
No, ma'am.
Therefore, there will be no public comments. The consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance designating a certain area as a reinvestment zone for commercial industrial tax abatement in the city of Dennison, Texas pursuant to the Texas Tax Code, Chapter 312, to be known as the Dennison Commercial Industrial Tax Abatement Reinvestment Zone, number 22-001, City of Dennison, Texas, containing approximately 48.456 acres and being part of the J.D. Sutherland Survey, abstract number 1150, being all of the 16.738 acre tracts of land and part of the 33.063 acre tract of land conveyed to General Mills Operations, Inc. by deed of record in volume 3366, page 789 of the Official Public Records, Grayson County, Texas, establishing the boundaries thereof and providing for an effective date. Ms. Ford?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Sorry, I wrote that, I know. So at your last council meeting, you adopted Resolution 4092, which was a resolution declaring the city's intent to be eligible to participate in tax abatements. And you also adopted a policy setting forth the guidelines and criteria for a business to be able to get a tax abatement on their property taxes from the city. The first step in being able to offer a business a tax abatement is to create a reinvestment zone that contains the property where the business is located. And this is a public hearing and then an ordinance for you to consider on creating a reinvestment zone over the Ruiz Foods Products, Inc. property. And so we will be asking you to take action on the ordinance at the conclusion of the public hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Ford? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance designating a certain area as a reinvestment zone for commercial industrial tax abatement in the city of Dennison, Texas pursuant to the Texas Tax Code, Chapter 312, to be known as the Dennison Commercial Industrial Tax Abatement Reinvestment Zone, number 22-001, City of Dennison, Texas, containing approximately 48.456 acres, as described in the ordinance, establishing the boundaries thereof and providing for an effective date.
Second.
There is a motion by Council, Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance ordaining the city of Dennison's participation in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code, providing tax incentives designating a liaison for communications with interested parties and nominating Reese Foods Products, Inc. to the Office of the Governor, to the Governor, the Office of the Governor, Economic Development and Tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project and other matters related thereto. Ms. Ford?
Thank you. The ordinance that you just adopted did create a reinvestment zone under Chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code over the Reese Foods Products property. That now makes them eligible for you to nominate them to the Office of the Governor to receive some state tax incentives as well. And so this ordinance is the ordinance to nominate them for that state program. And they will be submitting a rather extensive and detailed application to receive those state benefits. And this ordinance is one of the elements that they will be submitting with their application. And this is a public hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Ford? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance of ordaining the city of Dennison's participation in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code Act, providing tax incentives designating a liaison for communication with interested parties and nominating Reese Foods Products, Inc. to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development and Tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project and other matters related thereto.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold discussion, and take action on tax abatement agreement with Reese Foods Products Incorporated and within Dennison Commercial Industrial Tax Abatement Reinvestment Zone, number RZ22-001, at Reese Foods Products' existing facility and surrounding acres as 2410 Texoma Drive, Dennison, Texas, including land situated in the county of Grayson, state of Texas, containing approximately 48.456 acres and being a part of the J.D. Sutherland Survey, abstract number 1150, being all of the 16.738 acre tract of land and part of the 33.063 acre tract of land conveyed to General Mills Operations, Inc. by deed of record in volume 3366, page 789 of the Official Public Records, Grayson County, Texas. Ms. Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an actual agreement that would be between the city and Reese Foods to provide a five-year, 50% tax abatement on the value that they create by making improvements to their equipment at their property. This was tabled from your last council meeting after the required 30 days notice was provided. The company is requesting that you not take action tonight. They have a few details on their side that they are working on. Tony Kai is working closely with them to work through that. And we are going to put, do a new 30-day notice and then bring it to the first council meeting after that is what's anticipated. So no action to be taken this evening on this item.
Is there a, then we need a motion to table until April the 4th, correct?
It will actually be, we're going to post a new 30-day notice. And so it'll, you could just do a motion to table until after the 30-day notice is published. The 30-day notice will have the meeting date and time specifically in that notice, so it's okay if you don't put it in your motion.
So we need a motion to table until after the 30-day notice has been made public?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I move to table this item until after the 30-day notice is made public.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Courtright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the 2020-2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report presented by Brooks, Watson &amp; Company. Ms. Ossova?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Municipalities in Texas are required to have an annual independent audit per Texas Local Government Code. The city of Dennison is contracted with Brooks, Watson &amp; Company for this service and has completed the city's fiscal year 21 audit. They have issued an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean audit, for the city of Dennison's financial statements for the year ended September 30th, 2021. The annual comprehensive financial report is complete and ready for council's acceptance. Louis Breedlove, senior auditor with Brooks, Watson &amp; Company, will now present the conclusions of the audit and present, or answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. All right. I think I'm supposed to use this here. Sorry. Oh, should turn it on, that might be helpful. There we go. All right, thank you. So in front of you tonight, you should have a bound copy of the audit report. And inside of that front cover, in addition to the PowerPoint presentation that's also printed for you, there are two letters that I'll mention at the end of the presentation. First, what I, and foremost, what I like to do is give you a quick overview of the audit process. So, one, the audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We break our audit down into five phases. So there's the assessment phase where we're coming in and evaluating the processes and controls around various areas, pretty much anywhere where we see money coming in and going out. We're looking at the controls in those areas and evaluating the strength of those controls as well as to see if there's any room for improvement and making recommendations. And based on those controls that we walk through, we also detail test samples to ensure that as we look through those samples, we see those controls reflected. Once we've moved through the control evaluation, we move into the risk-based approach. So what we're doing there is we're evaluating at a risk level the various aspects of the financial statements. And what that does is dictate what type of testing we're going to do, to what level, and also what type of procedures we're going to do to ensure that we get comfortable with the material accuracy of the financial statements. Next, we do our compliance testing. Where, there, we're going to be looking at the city's compliance with laws, grants, regulations, Public Fund Investment Act, things of that nature, bid requirements to ensure that the city is in compliance with those types of transactions. Once we've moved past that, this is, we move into our fieldwork phase where we're, this is after year-end, where we are now tying out the financials at the end of the year. On the balance sheet side, we're confirming with third parties wherever possible, doing cutoff testing to ensure the city has properly accrued for everything where necessary. And as we're tying out that balance sheet, we're also ensuring the material accuracy of your revenues and your expenditures. Once we've done all the testing on those, we move into our conclusion and reporting phases where we are evaluating through multiple layers of review to ensure that all the testing performed was complete and accurate, all the necessary disclosures in the report have been included. And then we prepare the report and the letters that come with the report that we have for you tonight. Next, to give you an overview of what's included in the annual comprehensive financial report, so at the front of the report is the introductory section. It's going to include various aspects of the organization of the city as well as the transmittal letter. Then the financial section, that's going to include your auditor's opinion, the management's discussion and analysis, which gives you an overview of the city's budget as well as comparison year-over-year at the full accrual level and some commentary on that. The financial statements, that's going to include your full accrual as well as your fund-level statements. Behind that is the notes to the financial statements. That's going to contain more detail as it relates to those financial statements. And then the supplementary information, followed by the statistical section. Related to the auditor's opinion, the city did receive an unmodified opinion, often referred to as a clean opinion, and this is the highest level of assurance that we as auditors are able to provide. Also want to note that the city did receive another certificate of achievement from the GFOA for the past fiscal year 2020, and we fully expect the city to receive it again for 2021. Next, this is just going to give you a few financial highlights for the year, for 2021 fiscal year. Net position citywide was up 10 million. That's going to, there's various factors, part of that being funds that were issued for debt, a lot of capital, infrastructure, a lot of growth within the city. Looking at the governmental fund balances, general fund, restricted portion was at 1.7 million, up by a million. Your general fund unassigned portion was up by 2.2 million, at 8.1 million. All your, the remaining funds, the general bond, street improvement fund, and other non-major funds, those are all going to be restricted for various purposes. This gives you an idea of what the levels are there, at 11.2, 6.8, and 7.4 million. Looking at your proprietary funds, we always want to make sure that those are, those are operating more like a business, and we want to ensure that those are operating at a positive cash flow. And here we see that there was a net operating income of 5, 5.5 million, just over 5 million, and that's up 510,000 from a previous year. As it relates to your utility fund, the unrestricted net position was at 8.3 million, up 3.7 million from the previous year. Next, to give you a look at your general fund balance, so the city's policy is to, has a goal to achieve and maintain an unassigned fund balance in the general fund between 16 and 90 days of operating expenditures, or between 16 and 25%. For 2021, the city did, what was that, 29%? So just exceeding that, that target goal. As it related to your budget, the city had a, revenues exceeded your budget, your budget revenues by 4.6 million. Your expenses were under budget by 2.6 million with a positive variance. Others financing sources resulted in a positive variance of 143,000. So overall, your budget had a positive variance of 7.4 million. So assuming the city was able to accomplish everything you were seeking to accomplish for the year, this is a sign of a very healthy fiscal budget. Next, this is related to the communication letters. So those are the two other letters that were included in the front cover of that report. There's, the first letter being the communication with those with, with governments. There's a few things that that letter covers. It covers our responsibilities as the auditor, management's responsibility, and there are a few other key points I'd like to point out from that letter. So one being, the audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements regarding independence. We did not encounter any difficulties when dealing with management, and there were no uncorrected misstatements identified. Communication regarding internal controls, that's the second letter. This is where if we were to find any areas of concern, we would list out to you. So there were a couple recommendations noted for internal control, but no deficiencies were identified to be considered material weaknesses. And with that, I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Questions from council? Well, I enjoyed reading your letter. It was like a who's who of what's happening in Dennison.
Yeah.
So it was pretty cool. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Renee and Lori, for all your hard work. Renee's pointing to you, Lori, so she have a thing to do.
I do want to echo that. I, you know, working with the city, we got to work with the city for a few years now, and every, every year, it's always, one of my smoothest audits from, everyone is quick to respond, they are quick to provide support, they care a lot about the product that they're providing. And so it's just a pleasure working with Renee, Lori, and the whole team in the financial department, so.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. My contact information is there, so if you think of any questions, I know this is not the shortest document to read, so if you, after you've done some light reading, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out.
All right, thank you. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move that we accept the 2020-2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as presented by Brooks, Watson &amp; Company. Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by, I went brain-dead, Councilmember Thorne. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'm so sorry, James.
It's okay.
You know, you just said to me, right, that's all. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an agreement with Plumber Associates for engineering and design services for a treatment expansion at Randell Lake Water Treatment Plant for a total amount of $2,431,937, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to bring forward tonight our design contract for our water plant expansion. So you may know that Randell Water Treatment Plant is rated currently at 12.8 million gallons per day. In 2021, our average treated water was 5 million gallons per day. We'll note, we had a major 14-inch water line break that day, so our actual usage is probably a little bit less than that. This design contract will actually increase our capacity up to 23 million gallons per day, which will allow for an additional 8,000 connections per the TCEQ requirements. Our current limiting factor is our ability to filter the water as it comes through the plant. TCEQ rates you with your largest filter out of service. And so in this design contract, the filters, we're going to be adding four filters to the, to the water plant. We'll also be renovating one of our clarifiers to be able to treat more water in that clarifier as well. In, in the scope of services, you'll see that it covers more than just the engineering, it also covers the surveying work, the construction phase assistance, and project management. And so that 2.4 million, as that is quite a large number, it does do more than just the actual engineering design. If everything stays on track, our design will take about a year. And then construction, depending on how we phase in, that construction will take about two years. So we're looking at 2025 before this water plant is actually fully in service for the 23 million gallons per day. The cost is $2,431,937, and it is budgeted in the fiscal year 22 CIP plan. And so I am happy to answer any questions that you have on this design contract. We also have our engineers with Plumber Associates here as well.
Questions from council? Thank you, Carrie. Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the agreement with Plumber Associates for engineering and design services for a treatment expansion at Randell Water Treatment Plant for a total of $2,231,431,937, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Crowley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5D, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on entering into a contract with Archer Western Construction LLC for construction manager at risk, CMAR, services for the Lake Texoma Pump Station, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, again. This is another project I'm excited to get started on. We signed the agreement with Plumber Associates for Design in 2014, and due to several different challenges that we have run into, the Corps has finally granted us our easement, and we are ready to go ahead and get started. Back in the fall last year, staff recommended moving forward with the construction manager at risk services due to the intricacies of the design for the Cofford Dam and for the geotechnical work. The price, if we were to do the geotechnical work by ourselves, it was going to about double, so it would have been about $250,000. We are looking at about 100 to 150,000 for geotechnical work, which is not included in the construction manager at risk, that is on top of the proposed not to exceed of 150,000 with Archer Western. So staff drafted the RFP for a construction manager at risk in December, opened those in January, and a selection committee was chosen to have the interviews conducted in February of 2022. So based on Archer Western's experience, they have built pump stations all over the nation, they have a nationwide buying power as well, which helps with the supply chain concerns that we have every time we enter into one of these construction contracts now. And so based on the scores, based on their experience, the selection committee did recommend Archer Western as our CMAR for the pre-construction services. Our current timeline, hopefully, as long as everything is approved and everything moves as, as we are hoping, we're hoping to bring a guaranteed maximum price for your approval in August of this year. And then the construction will take approximately 18 months, depending on the weather. And so then the new pump station, if everything goes to plan, will be in operation in November of 2023. This, sorry, I forgot to move this. The yellow circle that you see on your screen is where our current pump station is. The red circle depicts where the new pump station will go. So we'll actually be further out into the lake, which will allow, when the lake levels drop, we have the ability to still pump water out of, out of the pump state, out of the lake into the pump station. And right now, everything runs in an open ditch down to Lake Randell that will enclose it into a 42-inch water line underneath of the, underneath the ground. Whoop, sorry. Hit it too many times. This is our current pump station. You can see on, in the pictures, they're in, it's in not too great of shape, so this will help solidify our ability to pull water out of Lake Texoma for, for many years to come. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Ms. Jones? Thank you, Carrie. Discussion from council?
It's exciting we're finally here.
Finally there, finally there. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the contract with Archer Western Construction LLC for construction manager at risk, CMAR, services for the Lake Texoma Pump Station, authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5E, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on issuing payment in the amount of $125,100 to the Dennison Independent School District for the city of Dennison's portion of the Texas Education Association Operation Connectivity Grant. Ms. Bowlin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I stand before you tonight to discuss the partnership agreement between Dennison Independent School District and the city of Dennison to provide 25% of the funding requirement for the Remote Learning/Operation Connectivity Grant. The purpose of this grant is to provide e-learning devices and home internet solutions to enable the remote learning of students during the COVID-19 pandemic. As part of the program, the Texas Education Agency offered to pay an added 25% of the total price if cities contributed the other 25% to cover the cost of the devices. Dennison ISD requested participation from the city in July of 2020. The TEA grant program used collective bargaining and bulk ordering to obtain special pricing and funding for half of the full purchase price for the Chromebooks and the hotspots. Through the program, Dennison ISD purchased 1,200 Chromebooks and 900 AT&amp;T hotspots with unlimited data service for a year. The total order cost for the hotspots and devices was $500,400. The city agreed to contribute $125,100 toward the Operation Connectivity Grant in October 2020. Dennison ISD supplied documentation to the city in March of 2022 and is requesting those pledged funds. Dennison ISD has paid half of the total cost, leaving the balance to be shared by TEA and the city at 25%. the city at 25% each. As the planned expense was pledged in October 2020, the expense was not planned for the 2022 budget year. Dennison ISD has agreed to defer the payment until the start of the next budget year this October. Staff are requesting additional funding through FEMA grant opportunities to assist with this COVID-related budget expense. Staff are seeking approval for the $125,100 payment to Dennison ISD for the city's portion of the Operation Connectivity Grant, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Ms. Bowen? Thank you. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve issuing payment in the amount of $125,100 to the Dennison Independent School District for the City of Dennison's portion of the Texas Education Association Operation Connectivity Grant.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5F, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an ordinance considering all matters incident and related to the issuance, sale, and delivery of the City of Dennison, Texas Combination Tax and Limited Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2022-A, authorizing the issuance of the certificates, approving and authorizing instruments and procedures relating to said certificates, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Assistant Manager Wagner?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. You're aware that during the budget process, we talked about capital improvement projects that were required and needed for the city to move forward. Back in January, we asked that you would pass our approval of a resolution for publication of notice of intent. This notice of intent has been on our website ever since then, and we have had two newspaper publications. And now, pricing has occurred today, and we are here to counsel to request the ordinance passing authorizing issuance of certificates. But, and I want to state that staff does recommend approval of this ordinance, but we have here with us Marty Schu. Many of you have met Marty in the past. She's with Hilltop Securities. They are our financial advisors on these bonds, and she's here to present the pricing that occurred today so that you'll know exactly what you're approving. And then funding should be issued in April if council so chooses to pass this ordinance this evening. And so, exciting news. It's a volatile time right now in the market, and so Marty's going to share with you what we did this time. And it was a negotiated sale, but I'll let her give you all the information on that, and then she'll answer those questions. But staff does, does recommend approving the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Marty Schu with Hilltop Securities. We represent the city as your financial advisor. So we put together just these brief bond sale booklets to go over the results of your sale this morning. As Ms. Wagner mentioned, we are in a period of volatile time. As you're probably aware, the current geopolitical situation, economy, we are in what we would consider a rising interest rate environment. But the good news is that as part of your negotiated sale, you did have two underwriters that were engaged to pre-market and sell your bonds to the public, and they were able to get orders of indication ahead of time, and they were able to lock in a bid for a final true interest cost of 3.05%. So it's a TIC of 3.05%. It's a little bit higher than what we've seen over the last couple of years, but that being said, we still think it's a very favorable rate to lock in by historical comparison. We have included in your packets behind tab A, the full set of the numbers for you, so you can see what that interest rate translates into interest over the life of the bonds. They are being amortized over a 20-year period to provide the city $24.3 million of funds, and they're just being amortized with equal annual payments over that 20-year period. And as part of the normal bond issuance process, the city did have to apply for and purchase a bond rating. The rating agencies come in and they, they hand off a lot of questions to staff, and they go through and they do a full credit analysis on the city. The city's credit rating is much similar to our own personal credit ratings. The higher your personal credit rating is, the lower the interest rate is when you go to buy a car or purchase a home. Same holds true for the city. The higher your credit rating is, the lower your interest costs. So part of the main reason for those attractive rates that you receive on your bonds is attributable to the high credit ratings of the city. So both Standard &amp; Poor's and Fitch did come in and do a credit assessment, and I'm pleased to report that they did affirm a double A minus and a double A credit rating of the city. That's a little bit split, they're one off of each other, but I do think it's significant to note that in both cases, there's only two or three rating notches ahead of you that you can get to a perfect rating. So you're in a very elite category. You should be very pleased. They do publish a full report in connection with the issuance, and we've included both of the reports behind the second tab for you. And I just want to point out that they do highlight the very strong budgetary performance, strong reserves, liquidity, and the strong management of the city. So all in all, we think you should be pleased, even though we are in a period of volatility. We think it's an excellent rate and want to congratulate you on a successful sale. This is the final step of the bond issuance process, so by adopting the ordinance before you tonight, you are effectively locking this interest rate into place for the life of these bonds. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance considering all matters incident related to the issuance, sale, and delivery of City of Dennison, Texas Combination Tax and Limited Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2022-A, authorizing the issuance of the certificates, approving and authorizing instruments, procedures relating to said certificates, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Courtwright and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item 6A, receive a report and hold a discussion on the Minimum Property Standards Assistance Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you may recall, through the budget process this year, a question was made for funding to start a new Minimum Property Standards Assistance Program, which was granted. I'm excited to finally announce that we're ready to roll out the new program on April the 1st this year. Tonight, I'm just wanting to share with you guys the details of the program, answer any questions that you may have. So the purpose of the program is real simple. We want to assist Dennison homeowners that have a need to make them compliant with our Minimum Property Standards ordinance. I do want to point out, the picture in this slide is the work of some proactive Minimum Property Standards by code that turned into a much nicer-looking home on a major thoroughfare here through town. So what are some of the eligibility requirements to get this assistance? You have to live in Dennison, is one of the biggest things. Has to be owner occupied. You have to qualify income-wise, and of course, you have to have Minimum Property Standards violations that do need to be repaired. So talking about the qualifying financially, we're going to use the same chart that we use for CDBG grants that we give. This program assists low-to-moderate income residents in Dennison. So what constitutes low-to-moderate income residents, or LMI for short? These are households that don't exceed 80% of the median income. Of course, that's adjusted for the number of people in the home in Grayson County, which we reside. So for example, if it's a household of one, that homeowner can make up to $39,500 and not exceed the 80% of the median income for our area, and then so on and so forth there. So what are the program details? So this is a reimbursement program. We're going to reimburse up to $2,000 per residence. The program is set up to reimburse either the homeowner or a contractor, whichever they indicate is going to do the work. Whoever's going to do the work will make it where they have to submit different documents, depending on who's going to do the work and who we're reimbursing. All the projects will have to be pre-approved. We will not pre-fund any projects. And of course, the projects are going to be based off what's available funding-wise at the time. So what repairs are eligible? Remember, this is Minimum Property Standards. This is what we see when we're driving down the street. This is the forward-facing stuff. These are going to include things like siding repairs, fascias off it trim repairs. It may be replacing a broken window on a property, of course, painting a property. The things that we would not include are things like fencing and accessory buildings or landscaping. We will not reimburse for any of those type of repairs. So what is the process to apply for the grant? The goal was to make this as easy as possible for our residents. We're going to have an online version where they can fill it out, upload their documents. We'll have a paper version where they can turn that in, and they're supporting documents. Once they apply, the city will do a pre-inspection of the property to verify that they do have Minimum Property Standards violations that need to be addressed. So once someone applies, everyone's going to get a response. Either yes, you're approved and you can proceed with the repairs, or there will be instances where we would not be able to provide assistance. In those cases, it may be because of funding, it may be because of their income level being too high. It may be that when we go out to do a pre-inspection, that their home, we want to make sure that we are using the money wisely. So if we go out and someone's applying to paint their house, and they need a new roof, or they need a new foundation, that the structure itself is good before we start putting paint on that. So we would have to visit with them about bringing their, getting those other major issues addressed before we go to paint a house that really needs more major work. So let's say they apply, and they do qualify, and we tell them to proceed with the work. After the work is done, they would turn in all the supporting documents, whether that's receipts or invoices. We'll go back out to ensure that the work was done properly, and that does address all the Minimum Property Standards at the house. They can't, again, they can't just put paint on a house that needs a new roof. Okay, it's got to be compliant totally with the ordinance before we make any reimbursement. Another part of this before reimbursement is if they had nuisance violations on their property, if they had cars, junk cars, rubbish, or storage, we would make them get rid of that stuff as well before we would reimburse them through the program. So I can tell you, I'm super excited to be able to roll this program out. It's, for me, it's been a long time coming. I think that we can make a positive impact in our neighborhoods through this, and I'm kind of excited to see where it goes. So if you got any questions, I'd really love to answer those for you.
So the maximum amount, Robert, is $2,000?
Yes, we debated on that a little bit, but this is our first go-around with this. We wanted to make the, the, the funding go as far as we could. We thought that was a fair amount. Whenever I was studying some other cities and how they structured this, you know, that kind of is what some others are doing. So that's where we landed.
So can you, can you paint a house for $2,000?
No, ma'am, you, well, I guess if it was a really small house, you could, but this was never really designed to do all of a project.
So it's just a supplemental?
Yeah, that, that's why I like the word assistance. We will help you, but we can't, I mean, it would take, you know, a typical house in Dennison, let's say a 1,200 square foot house that has siding, you know, between 3,000 and 4,000 to paint a house and do some siding repair and fascias off at work on a house like that. So, you know, maybe on an average Dennison house, maybe half. That's just a ballpark, of course.
That, that helps?
I was about to say, free money if they'll put the work in is, you know, and if, if they did the work themselves, now that might complete it. Hiring a contractor is what those figures were, which would be much more expensive.
I think, I just want to make sure there's, there's some clear communication so that once we receive that application, I don't want the homeowner, while we're processing it, because it's going to take time, I get that, I don't want them to get another violation when we're working on it, you know what I mean? So that, and that's going to be a communication thing that we'll all have to work on together so that their, their status is pending, you know?
Sure.
Kind of thing while we're working with them. But otherwise, I think this is going to be a great program. I'm anxious to see how it works and see what, what it needs going forward. You don't know until you start it, and then we'll know what the needs are. But I think this is a really good start. I'm anxious to see how, how far these funds can go and what we can do.
More questions or comments from council? Thank you, Mr. Lay. This does not require action, was information only, and it's a very exciting new program. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene the executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any post-agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551.071. Confer with city attorney on contract to convey real property in terse number three. Confer with city attorney regarding funding sources for personnel-related costs. Confer with city attorney regarding City of Dennison versus Sherman Pro Auto Glass LLC et al., 397th District Court, Grayson County, Texas. Discuss the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or sell value of real property. Public discussion of such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position, Section 551.072. Confer and conveyance of real property in terse number three. The time is 6:46, and the council is now in executive session.